Physically using wood and materials we bought and we are going to be making a house. And it's a very interesting and I like that, I like that very much.
That's incredible. So not only in architecture, but also in water polo. Tell me how you're dealing with both those, both water polo and architecture as well as your academic classes?
Well, it's a big struggle, but I really do enjoy it because I have Ahmad and Shadi as my coaches and they are just the greatest. And I'm really happy to have them as coaches because they really, because that was my fall sport and they welcomed me into Beverly. And they made this a much happier place and I'm happy to have them.
And as I recall, the water polo season is now over, am I right? So what are you doing now that water polo is finished?
I plan on doing boys volleyball because I am six foot one and I think that my height will be a contributing factor to that team.
That's great. Okay, thank you. And now sending it to Noel and Leo.
We'll see you next week.
Have you seen it? Oh, alright, so we are here with Jayden who is freshman president of ASB and also of Cyber Patriot. Could you tell us a little bit about what Cyber Patriot is?
So Cyber Patriot is a competition sponsored by the Air Force Association, which is, um... Well, we, we have a cybersecurity competition and we play semifinals. So we're given three images and we have to secure every single flaw in that image within six hours. So we have meetings every Tuesday and we compete once a month every Saturday. And we hope to go to Nationals, which is in Baltimore, Washington DC.
Cool. And what exactly happens at Nationals?
At Nationals, we will have, uh...
She gives the people, ooh, that's her homework copy. She always asks me to copy, like, for them to copy my homework. And then I'm like, no, you can't because she's gonna attack me and she's gonna call you.
Can you help me bring stuff up because Josh doesn't want to work. It'd be Josh's homework.
Also, I think they, um, they just found out about the Skippy Love video.
Oh, they did? Skippy Love. Yeah.
He did one of his final shows, he's dead now.
Oh, yeah, he died, yeah.
Yeah, one of the shows, yeah, one of the shows that he did, he died in 2017.
Something like that, yeah.
He died a long time ago. Anyway, he still has a show. I didn't put it on, I had it on, but it let, like, some students take over the, you know, the, um, they go over the programming.
Yeah.
Can we keep running it? I guess because they think I like it, right?
Which I do, but I mean, if you care, I feel you don't like it.
Enough is enough, right? But anyway, keep playing and if you listen to it. This guy's like...
Yeah, I remember that guy would come in.
Uh huh.
He would look half dead.
You know what he looked like?
It's a lot of, yeah.
He was like, he was literally like...
Of course. Like, I would, you know, if he was alive, so...
That's true.
I never remember.
Uh, which one? Maybe I'll say everyone.
I think so, I don't know, I might just... Do you know how, is it, does it smart, it's fifty questions? Um... My past year's conference.
Okay, you're up, um, okay.
So...
He's tired.
I didn't know that. Really?
Yeah.
Why didn't you even know that?
Yeah, we didn't know.
Um, this past year, yeah.
Required...
Wow, you didn't even know that?
He was my, my, he worked at my brother's school as well, so. My brother's telling me.
That was such a long answer.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Guess that was it for you.
Yeah, but he was actually like, supposedly, my brother told me, he was, uh, like California, like on the basketball, like California. Like, he was really smart. But like, he always acted like really stupid.
But he was really smart.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wait, so what if, so what if she puts out on Twitter? She wants...
Alright, so that's, you get your comments on?
I'll set this up.
Yeah, I like, I like him. He's gone now. Maybe he's been drinking, I think.
Yeah, I heard it.
Heard it.
He was like... Yeah, I heard, you know my, you know my brother, uh, my brother's school? I don't know. And he's cool, that's how religious they were. And like, like, um, what's it called? I don't know. I guess, cause it was... How they sound.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know.
So he was, yeah, he's French or something.
Yeah.
Um, but like, he would, he would come, he would have a banquet, yeah. And you would see like all these, like, white hat people, like, white shirt, white pants, you know, like the whole thing. And you would see like three people, and when I was like the student, like, two of them, people who were in the school.
Yeah, they're students. Yeah, we're, we're Jewish.
They would just like stand there, like, we were so loud, or...
Okay, I'll get it.
I'm like, I feel like, like, students love them.
This one's the one where people actually...
Yeah, students love them.
Uh, I would like never send them.
I mean, yeah, they all have a pretty, like, we're still, still, like, like, okay.
The group pop, the first voice exchange.
Yeah, I don't know how they do it, like, in this school.
So he was, he was working at two schools.
Group is full, thirty two.
Yeah, they're hardworking. That's why he's not here, because he, you know, he, he had to be there.
Oh, true, I sent my geometry homework to the long, we chat, I sent it out.
Well, he also wants to talk.
Oh, he's, yeah, I think it was the dumb one. But they send homework on there. Because they got the answers, because they don't...
And you can't get any higher, so it's not worth it.
Yeah, I sent my geometry homework to the, to the long...
He used to be really young, though.
No, he's still got started right out of college.
I think, oh, we know, you didn't, I took it.
I teach and I look at my every annual year and I managed to stay teaching at that, you know, at school. Even if it's a couple of schools. My retirement, there's accumulated credits for thirty years.
It's all the people who are like...
You reach a level of...
Ask for answers and then they get the answers on you.
You don't need to work.
Yeah.
Because you're making as much money in retirement as you do at school.
Oh, yeah, she, yeah, we have to print them at home.
There's a hedge because you're making maybe ten dollars more, but you should be doing it, right? Should be, or you've got, you should know, say everything.
Yeah.
And now it's just retirement.
Can you know another recommend, honestly, like, for you?
Yeah.
Um, SMC, I just, yeah, um, I believe you know like Paul nine five, right?
Yeah.
So like, if you teach like a film, like, all of a sudden five, you could make thirty dollars, thirty dollars. A year, yeah.
It's like writing an essay.
Oh, speaking of, would you call it Ryan?
I can play, um, I'm talking to someone, I'm gonna have to do this myself.
Yeah.
What do you do?
She does, she just keeps it.
Yeah.
Potato.
Yeah, the CTE teacher.
Wow. Hey, how do you do it?
It's like, so you're gonna be supposed to do, but it's not like doing it. It's not like, I mean, she's like, I mean, it's chicken, it's a teacher. It's chickens, it's one of those things.
Did everything? Yeah, yeah.
See, the...
You know, Mika Palmer and today I tell you how she's gonna be on lava with me? I'm just so excited. I wasn't saying you know who she is, I'm saying you know that she's gonna be. Of course, you know. And some girl named Ella. Yeah. We're coming November.
I'm in jail, I'm in that more, I don't know, she's like...
Yeah, I read it, so we're perfectly fine.
It would say, because he would be a good CTE teacher. Is he a teacher or is he a student? I don't know.
So...
Later, really.
It's per career teaching, it's per career teaching or something. Oh, it's, it's, it's a degree that allows you to teach high school, middle school.
Because you don't know where you're writing, so then you have to go back.
Yeah.
Well, I'm pretty busy.
I'm pretty busy.
I'll start with the...
If you're serious about it, I'll walk you through it. I helped, I helped Rodney get one. Like, sorry, I have to help you, I complete, uh...
Oh, yeah, that's all for me on the test, all the kids. We also went to a report this, we completed a lot of, just from everyone.
Yeah.
Like red bloods up, moving out.
But I, I know how to, I know how to, I know how to, keep assisting.
Two more words. Oh, my God. Oh, yeah, I think it's, oh, yeah, I did. Because, um, for some reason, dumb people chose me because they thought that it was like a group activity and they wanted to use me.
You can do it.
But, that's for later, I thought that happened. You know how she puts in groups?
Yeah.
She's like whoever wins the, in the group gets extra credit. I got it. Like, she's putting in, and you have to answer questions. You're just looking at, you have extra credit. It's only...
So you wrote that?
No. It's on my quiz list, look. A hundred and ten turn. Do you know what, beleaguered? No.
I know what beleaguered means.
What does it mean?
Tired out, something.
No, it doesn't. It means besieged but encircled as with an army for a hat.
beleaguered is like an army, yeah, beleaguered army means they're getting their butt kicked.
beleaguered means to harass.
beleaguered means tired out.
It means to surround, they're trying to...
beleaguered?
The, the beleaguered.
Here, watch, you're looking at one of them, but it's not... Wait, who's on it from that?
beleaguered.
beleaguered? That's true.
So I didn't know, why is it so... It's not, it's not...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Was that accurate?
Yeah.
We can't focus.
We can't focus.
Don't know it.
Oh, I already know that.
No, Phil.
No one?
Do you have today? Is this the little dead chef?
Is that my, uh...
Yes. Yes, I look for her.
Yeah, you may.
I have no.
Sorry. No, no. You're fine.
All right, that's the first thing.
What's up?
Yeah. And well, not only that, and making diagnosis. Your child was good.
Yes, sir.
Anywhere but in life? So Cheryl and I have to abstain from including the four minutes we worked there. That's fine. That's just, maybe that has to be pulled for a staff stain item.
Yeah, I think so. Let me pull that.
Thank you.
That was the 22nd.
I wish that they would, like, take this BHUSD admin and just, like, blow it up.
Okay, and then we're pulling on the B8B1. Do you want that here?
I didn't see that.
I mean, I asked him to be here in case he could help you.
He didn't say that. He said, "Do you need me?"
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was.
He did not say you said that.
Okay.
He just said, "Really weird." And I said, "I don't think so." I said, "I don't know."
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Pardon my, uh... Voice, my Benadryl is wearing off and these weather and fires have been not nice to me. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask for... Dustin, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
And remember what Councilman DeGol taught us this morning, okay?
Everyone, please raise your right hand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You just feel it like a tidal wave coming over you or changing that pledge, changing the way we say it. Okay. Because it is Civility Month, we have been tasked with sharing with our colleagues at the Human Relations Commission their civility pledge, and we'll read that to kick off the meeting to celebrate this month of civility. Unless you live in DC. I guess that doesn't apply to DC. The Human Relations Commission promotes positive human relations in all aspects of community life. We invite every member of this community to support an environment where civility, respect, and responsible actions prevail. The primary objective of the Beverly Hills Human Relations Commission is to actively establish our city as a model of a just and equitable society. The Commission recognizes the benefits inherent in a diverse community, fosters understanding and acceptance of all its citizens, and promotes civil discourse and conduct. Thank you very much, Human Relations Commission. Thank you. Okay. I need to get an approval of the agenda, please.
I will need approval of the agenda.
I will second. I will second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Agenda is approved. We do have a colleague, Dr. Bergy. One of our cabinet members is absent due to the issues plaguing Southern California, and there may be some issues that we get to later in the agenda that we decide to table because of that, okay?
Very true.
But I will leave that to my colleagues to do.
Sure.
Okay. Report of closed session action, sir?
Yes, the board has voted five to zero to approve OAH Case 2019070481.
Thank you very much. Ms. Krausauer, any public comment cards? Nope. Anybody? Bueller? Good. Thank you. Always have to sneak that in there. Okay. Hit him with the hind. Move over to the consent calendar. I have items 8A1 and 8B1 to pull. Anything else, colleagues, before I'll make the motion? Okay. Thank you. And once again, thank you for staff for being vigilant on answering the questions for myself and my colleagues regarding the consent items. I'll make approval to approve the consent calendar minus items 8A1 and 8B1.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 8A1 was asked to be pulled. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting on October 15th.
A second?
Second. Any comment or discussion? Okay. Did you want to share why we pulled this, or did you...
No, I just want to call the question and have an opportunity to abstain.
Okay. You got it. All in favor?
Aye.
I will have to abstain now.
I didn't call for that yet. All opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Two abstentions. Thank you very much because they... Well, I wanted them to explain that, but I didn't want to put words in their mouth. That's the last thing I'm gonna do. Okay, item 8B1. I'll make a motion. I have to bifurcate this personnel report, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the certificated personnel report revised minus item eight and nine.
A second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And now, somebody else, please make a motion on eight and nine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve items eight and nine. I need a second?
Second motion.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Well, I can still call for that.
Oh, you want to vote for it?
No, I can call for that.
Okay.
I just didn't want to make the motion since I can't vote for it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I am recusing myself from that vote. So, thank you very much. Motion carries. Four ayes and one abstention. Okay. Okay. Flying down through the superintendent's report.
So I had the opportunity to attend two events last week, which were just gigantic in nature. So the multiculturalism week at Horace Mann was amazing. I know that several of our board members were also in attendance. In my entire career, I've never seen something that was so big that incorporated so many ideas and really did a great job of taking kids on a journey throughout... It was really a journey around the world. Students actually had passports, and it was probably the most authentic multicultural week that I've ever seen, and it just was... Took hundreds of people to put that together, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
You gotta talk about the food.
It didn't have the food. You know, I'm on keto.
I was there on Friday. There was a lot of food. It was all homemade. It was really amazing.
It smelled good.
And I was there Wednesday for the Asian multicultural, and it was... They had every country represented, not...
Never seen anything like it.
It was fabulous.
There was very thematic of the countries that they came from and so on.
Yeah. It was impressive.
It's remarkable. Also, attended an event, and it's kind of a nice thing to have when our parents put together a program, they, you know, it's go big or go home. The event at Hawthorne, the Fall Harvest Festival, was as big as a county fair, and so it was a great opportunity after I was barraged by parents the first hour. I was able to enjoy myself and had some great spiritware and was able to interact with a lot of our students. So what an amazing event. People really come out for that, and so I just want to thank both Horace Mann and Hawthorne for that. Our middle school ASB is being modeled very much after our high school ASB. And again, this is just one of those opportunities, again, where we at the middle school level start to provide high school experiences at an earlier age and teach leadership, and it's nice to know that the ASB at the middle school is off to a good start. They're already starting to have fundraisers, and they had a breast cancer awareness fundraiser, and so they've jumped into the deep end with what ASB is all about. I also had an opportunity, as we've talked about before, that the space at the high school is severely compromised with a lot of the construction that's going on, and so we have... And I should say, Ms. Starkins did an excellent job of just finding places for our students to have their performing arts opportunities. And so I was able to see Mr. Bradbury and the first orchestra, the Fall Orchestra Concert, which was held at Horace Mann, and it was just... It was a wonderful event. It was nice to see that we are accommodating our own school within a school, and the space was appropriate, and it was just... It was nice to see our staff members from elementary working with our high school staff, and even afterwards, this is just how gracious Mr. Bradbury is, but he... Because this is our school and our property, he did not want to leave until he was sure that every single chair was put back and ready for Horace Mann students the next day. And it was just so impressive that, you know, we have that relationship with one another and we care for each other a great deal. So that space worked out perfectly, and so I know we'll be back several times again this year, but I just wanted to let you know that I was able to experience that. And then I also just want to mention with another benefit to our reconfiguration is something that we haven't had the opportunity to do before, and that is on our professional and development days. So for the first time, we were able to differentiate our professional development by level. So we were able to meet teachers where they're at by their level, and so I feel like the topics that we covered, the training that we covered through Aries Communication and Aries Gradebook, Google Classroom, we actually, I believe, by being able to differentiate by level, I think that we have become more efficient in so many more ways than we even thought, and so that went very well. I think we used about every minute of that professional development time. So I want to thank teachers and administration and the cabinet for putting together such a robust agenda. And that's it.
Mr. Quarterback, sir?
So last week, the high school ASB put together a custodian appreciation week. Sometimes we forget to appreciate the people that work behind the scenes, so it was very nice to thank these custodians and meet them, and, you know, that was an awesome experience for all the ASB. And also, it sounded like the Hawthorne Fall Harvest Festival and the Horace Mann Multicultural Week were great... Week were great successes. I wish I was able to partake in all the food extravaganzas, but I was at school, so, yeah. Thank you.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Was this the first time that you've honored the custodians as a student body? Have they done it in the past?
Yeah, they did it last year, but I just wanted to comment on it.
Well, I think that's wonderful, and I'm glad that, because we sometimes forget them, and that's not very good. They are really so important to our school, and I thank you for doing that.
And I encourage the other schools to do it as well, so.
Thank you, Thomas. And I also wanted to add on all the wonderful events that happened last week, is that the Beverly Vista Middle School had their first large social event on Saturday with their Halloween haunt. They had a DJ and food trucks and a movie. My poor wife ran a popcorn stand for hours and hours and hours, and it's a rule of three, everybody. So, it was an amazing event to see that, because it was the first of its kind, held at in the district, so I didn't want that to go. And the people who worked, the PTA and the members who worked and put that together, did a stellar job, so. Okay. Thank you for the reports. Moving on to human resources. I have a motion I need on a resolution.
I move approval of resolution 2019-2020-06, authorizing assignments in accordance with Education Code 44258-7B.
A second.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. President, I wonder if I'm the only one. I was not able to access this resolution, to call it up on my computer. Was I the only one that was unable to?
I couldn't either.
So, I have a problem voting for a resolution that I have not been able to see, and I'm wondering, is there any kind of a rush on approving this resolution?
Mr. Seaman, is this under your department or HR?
I mean, I could explain. Do you want me to read just the beginning of the resolution? This is a regular procedure.
It's an annual procedure? Is it? Okay.
So, for this resolution, this allows a full-time teacher who holds a credential and is subject other than physical education to coach competitive sport for which students receive physical education credit for one period a day if that teacher has completed a minimum of 20 clock hours of first aid instruction appropriate to this specific sport, and this impacts two staff members.
Impacts, excuse me?
Two staff members.
That was, what's the?
Better coaching.
No, because we go through this every year. I'm sorry? Yeah. Standard operating procedure. Why don't you give it to Mr. Spitz and take a look at it? I don't mind taking images.
Thank you.
And you all need to sign it.
Okay.
So, we all should read it.
I had it on my computer.
You had it on your computer?
You were able to download it?
I wasn't able to, but I just tried it and it worked.
I just tried it, but it didn't work.
I used to use like the.
Well, your computer's not.
You don't have a VHS computer.
Right. Let me read yours.
Exactly, that's why it usually stuff works.
You need to sign it? Okay. No, I think I did see this. I did see this. I did see it. I did read it.
You didn't even vote for it, you're signing it.
I just.
Well, pick it. Well, you got three votes.
What a joke. Okay.
I didn't sign it.
Well, I'm not going to let you, because you're not the only ones who haven't signed it, Rochelle. We're going to do it right. We're going to teach these newbies how it's done, okay? Okay. Did he really?
This is erasing.
Okay. Mr. Spitz, I believe you signed it in pencil, too. What is that?
No.
Okay.
I signed it in gray pen.
No, Mr. Spitz. You're not Mr. Spitz.
No, he signed it in blue pen.
Oh, that's.
You need glasses?
I don't know what this is. This looks like pencil, but.
It's gray pen.
Okay. Well, we fell apart pretty quickly tonight, everybody. We were looking strong, and we really went south. But Pileman's here, so now we've got to get our act together. Sorry, Jeff. We're on it. Okay. Any more questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Let me just borrow that for a second. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I had a pen. It's out of ink. Okay, there you go.
Some excuse.
That's the fastest you'll ever get something signed, Ms. Krausauer. Trust me.
I agree when there's five.
I know. I know. We're spoiling her, guys. Just careful on it. Okay. Moving on to business and finance. Dr. Bergy, do you want to give the update on this?
Yeah, Bergy has the slide.
Okay.
Okay, well, it won't be the fastest. So, this is on the one-to-one. So, when we last met, there were some discussions about where we are with our one-to-one program and how do we proceed. The Board had asked us to do some digging and investigate a little bit further with teachers and finding out which teachers are using the one-to-one devices, and so Mr. Seaman is going to share with us some of that survey data. But I do want to, before we start the conversation, I want to also be sure to just let you know where we kind of left off with the cabinet, and the cabinet recommendation, along with our principles, is to ensure that we do have one-to-one computers for each of our students, and we'll talk a little bit more about why it's necessary.
Good evening, Board. One of the, when we left our last Board of Education meeting, one of the questions that was prompted toward cabinet was to survey not only our elementary, it was actually primarily the middle school, but we took it a step further and also surveyed the elementary teachers as well, to be able to see what was the daily usage rate of the devices that were currently one-to-one, in addition to how many devices might have been left on the shelf to be able to utilize or be able to possibly move from the middle school to the high school. And so, after being able to walk the halls, do survey, and actually survey directly to the staff themselves without seeing it with our own eyes, the middle school currently is living within carts, and those carts are currently housed within the academic -- core curricular areas. Everything is academic, sorry. In the core curricular areas, one of the biggest issues as we started to open up this discussion within the middle school staff itself was, by moving away from the one-to-one, one of the things we've identified is it's eliminated certain areas to be able to participate in utilizing technology. So, one of the backlashes from the removal of the one-to-one concept was programs like the visual and performing arts no longer has access to technology to be able to deliver in the classroom, because the computers are staying within that math, science, English, and social studies realm. An example would be Dr. K. utilizing to be able to record music, to be able to look up sheet music on a device, or even give a homework assignment outside of just practicing utilizing the instrument. Another would be Ryan Lisco within the visual arts process of being able to do anything in animation, except for we have been able to purchase additional laptops within Ed Services to be able to support the photography and the animation, but if outside of the animation class, like his clay work or anything, beginning art, he's not able to utilize or infuse technology because the devices aren't following the students. So, if anything, I believe that the staff would say that there's a shortage of computers now within the middle school due to the fact that it isn't one-to-one. For the elementaries, when you're looking at, predominantly was focused on the third to fifth grade band because they have the laptops versus the iPads, and all of the teachers had responded that there's daily use of them, and the majority of them, meaning, and I can kind of go down the list, especially around the four or five grade band, they're actually taking their devices home with them. So, you have a lot of our fourth and fifth grade students across the district actually carrying the device home, and we're not doing that at the middle school. I'm just, this all. Then, when we get into, obviously, the high school, and Mr. Mead is here, so he could always jump up and assist me, we are currently in the process from our last Board meeting of looking at and retrieving devices from some of our current students that have devices to be able to prep for interim assessment blocks for the CASP testing, and also some of the other opportunities that we need to prepare our 11th grade students for, just around the testing window. And so, that kind of is where we left off from the last meeting that we had.
Okay, so what I'm hearing in summation is that there are no extra, in the K8 arena, there's no extra computers at all. They're all being utilized. In fact, if need be, there's actually a need for more in some of the areas. And I hear that, and that's why we asked the question and forced to take a look at it, so hopefully it made us all aware of who is really successfully utilizing some of these laptops and who isn't. Hopefully, that would come out of this survey as well that you did. So, the other question that we had was the pricing structure, and I know that there was some discussion about that attached to the agenda, a lot of quotes.
Right. And unfortunately, Mr. Roach is not here, who put together a compilation of different quotes, but the idea is that there, you know, are computers out there that are updated, but also, you know, less expensive. So, the idea behind it is, those things do exist, and, you know, going to a different type of computer, like a Chromebook, for example, there is a different management system that needs to be incorporated into, you know, how all the systems are managed at the school. This is not my area of expertise, but, you know, and that could be a slight learning curve for our staff to manage, or it could be a large one. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. Well, since we have nothing for approval on the agenda tonight regarding this.
Right.
My hope is that by the next meeting, we can have that, and let my colleagues continue to ask the questions tonight, so that you guys come back fully, we come, we're fully informed, and you come back fully vetted out with the issue. What I'm hearing, Dr. Bergy, though, about the hardware, everybody should be able to run the same software, right? That even if you change to a different device, we still can run the same software, so there's no, there shouldn't be any major learning curve in that aspect.
I do believe so, but I also want to make sure that, you know, the device that we, if we are picking something that's different, that, you know, that we're not going to put ourselves in a position where, you know, we're going to pick something different again, and I want to make sure that this fits into our, you know, how we're going to replenish.
That's fine. And if we move forward with this at the next meeting, will that give especially Mr. Mead time to, for what he needs it for? Or do we have to convene quicker than that?
If the plan, right now, the plan is to finish up the tobacco surveys with the 10th graders. We do have a plan right now that probably a week from Monday, we'll begin a process where we will recollect the 10th grade computers. Check them in and give them to the 11th graders as soon as possible in order for them to begin preparations for the CASP. So, that is the current plan. So, we can take care of the absolutely necessary business with the computers we have there. It's going to be labor-intensive, but we do have a plan to get that done a week from Monday. Please begin.
I have a question.
Hold on a second. There would be no way for us to get computers fast enough to thwart that plan at this point, anyway? No, at this point. Would there have been at the last meeting if we approved it a week ago? That would have been probably. Okay. So, it came to the game, anyway.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, let me go on down the hall. So, like, I currently use a laptop that was issued this January, which is eight gigabytes of RAM and is touchscreen. It's the first and seventh document on the agenda, the Dell CTO 3400i5. If we do not purchase like this exact model, I believe we should keep continuity in the computers we purchase. For example, some of the computers in the quotes only have four gigabytes of RAM, some don't have touchscreen, some are Chromebooks, some are Dells. So, if we buy a different type of computer than we already issued, we are supplying different products to our students, and this creates a disunity, so that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you for that, Thomas. Anything, Mr. Spitz?
No. When we do wrap this up, I'd like to see Mr. Wade give us just a review of the controls over the computers, because it amounts to a great deal of money, and so our control protocol should be a very complete one.
Yep.
Okay.
So, generally, I like to keep things positive, but I just have to say, I find it mind-boggling that our third, fourth, and fifth graders have laptops and our ninth and 11th graders don't. I mean, how on earth did that happen? What I would like to see happen, I would like those third, fourth, and fifth grade laptops to be collected and deployed to the high school students. If we're buying different product, let's buy it and give it to the grades that are not as significantly impacted by a change in the technology, right? Third, fourth, and fifth graders, they can definitely adapt in an easier way, but our high school students are doing without at a time that they're about to launch into college and career life, and our third, fourth, and fifth grader, I mean, I love our third, fourth, and fifth graders, but seriously, these are the ones with the technology in their hands? I mean, we have to approach this, I think, in a different way. We've got to redeploy our resources and make sure that the gaps are filled at the high school, and we can authorize something with less memory. Clearly, the uses of third, fourth, and fifth graders are not even remotely the same as what it is for the high school students.
In full transparency, I want to say that that rollout plan was before our time.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll own it.
Doesn't mean it can't be fixed.
I'm not looking for someone to blame. What I'm saying is, let's use this as an opportunity now to say, okay, this is a problem. Let's walk it back. Let's redeploy to the high school the resources that they need, and then whatever it is we need, even if we have to buy a couple hundred more computers for our middle and high school students all to have this kind of Dell, and then we choose a Chromebook for the third, fourth, and fifth graders, fine. We can do that, but it makes much more impact on our high school students than it does on our third, fourth, and fifth graders right now, and that's something we could execute over the winter break.
Well, you could do it soon.
Certainly, long before CASP testing happens.
What I'm saying, in order for, to help out Mr. Mead, he wouldn't have to collect from 10th and redistribute to 11th if we collected. The question is, do we have enough to be successful in that endeavor? I think it's a great idea.
Even if we have to pull them temporarily from the sixth graders so that the high school students have them, I think that's a reasonable.
We have had that conversation. We've really, we've tried to turn it every which way to see how we could, you know, have less of a disruption to provide, you know, the students at the high school what they need right now. So, you know, if this is possible, President Margot is to come back at that meeting, you know, with a full plan, so that you're aware of what our recommendation is.
Okay. I'll continue going down, and then, thank you, Tristan. Good, very good thought.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Thomas for those comments that he just made, because that was very helpful for me, because one of the issues that I had while looking at all of the different models that were presented from Mr. Roach's, looking into the prices of different computers, I see where the problems can come in. I'm not a computer person, and I don't understand them completely. I just have to turn it on and make sure it works for what I want. But I also know that there's sometimes a problem in the sharing of the computers, because now, back in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the kids are sharing the computers, and sometimes that gets to be an issue, too. So, the fact that they're bringing them all back in and putting them in one cart, and that has become, you know, I was told that one day, or one of the students broke the monitor on one of them, and the next child came in and picked it up, and hey, look, my monitor is broken. I think that when a student has issued a computer like that, they'll take a little bit better care of it, and it's their personal computer, but here they have a computer that they're sharing with five other people or six other people during the day in the core classes, and I think that could be an issue. So, I made, I asked a lot of the questions that were on the questions, because I didn't know, but I now see that many of them have very good answers, so that I, you know, that I can realize how I could vote on the nine, the one-to-one in ninth and 11th grades. And so, I agree with Tristan that it's unfortunate that the ninth graders and the 11th graders that the 9th graders and the 11th graders don't have them right now. And I don't know whether they're able to use their own for this. I don't know how that's possible, because I understand they have to go into programs that are there, and their hardware may not, whatever manufacturer won't coincide with whatever, from what I know about computers. And so, I do think that we need to, I don't know if there's a computer that can be purchased in the same family, Tom, like a Dell with a little bit, I don't know if it can be less expensive, but it's still in the same family. But I do think that we need to move forward with this.
Ms. Zach.
So, a few, so two weeks ago, when we started this conversation, my concern was, that I shared with Mr. Margot, was common in that when we looked at the purchase order before us at that meeting, it seemed to be identical in the specs that were presented to us three years ago when we first purchased the first set of computers. So, my, I wasn't objecting to buying the computers, but my concern was, you know, are these specs outdated? And if so, the price should also not be identical. And so, it's, I know that Mr. Wade is, you know, and I appreciate, you know, he did some research, it seems like, and he's not here to share with us the findings of his research, although I did review the, the quotes that he gave us. But I was hoping that he would give us a little bit more information tonight. Having said that, I do understand that, so did you say, Dustin, I didn't hear you, did you say that had we moved forward with the purchase last week, the computers still would not have made it in time? Or would they have been here?
Yeah, no, I'm going to make an assumption, but I'm going to say that they probably wouldn't have been able to arrive by this time.
Would not.
But we are up against a little bit more, so currently, the 10th graders are utilizing it for a survey now.
Sure, sure.
So, they might not have been in our hands, say, today, but they could have possibly been in our hands to prevent us from trying to figure out a shifting process.
The only thing I will say in regards to what Mrs. Walker Schuman has suggested is that I know that the elementary teachers have lesson plans on Google Docs entirely. I know this because, yeah, I don't like to speak of my son, but he does have homework, and, I mean, their entire lesson plan is, I think, from what I see, is completely planned on this computer. So, I think it would be incredibly disruptive at this point to just, I mean, I don't know. I think you'd have to assess with the teachers what that would do to their curriculum. But I think that it is, from what I have observed, I've been able to see how much they rely on these computers on a daily basis. So, I'm not sure if that would be a practical suggestion at this time of the game, because it's so late into the year, into the semester. Are there any other solutions or proposals here for the juniors? I don't know, I mean.
I mean, I'm going to be totally transparent. I'm going to get beat up in the hallway, but, you know, I think that we, as a cabinet, are up against this with a lot of different things. I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. When we did a presentation around like Project Lead the Way, we were paying $1,000 for a unit of Project Lead the Way for a 4th grade student to open up a box and build a robot, but our high school students didn't have it then either. You know, so a lot of these things we're starting to be able to uncover of our, and I'm going to say this, but of our predecessors that made these decisions, you know, to employ into kindergarten, and into 3rd grade, and then into 6th grade. And it was a slow trinkle up, but again, a lot of those things never made it all the way to the top, to the 9th, 10th, and 11th grade, 12th grade. And I can go down a list of different things in ed services that that's the issue for. This is one of those. And unfortunately, without taking a computer away from somebody else that has already had it and already had been utilizing it. My fear only is, I agree with Tristan in the sense that, in the first place, we probably shouldn't have given even a kindergartner an iPad prior to a 12th grader a laptop. But unfortunately, that was prior to most of us being out here, in that now we have a kindergartner with that and has had it for three years. So, a 3rd grader has had a device for three years since this tech plan was rolled out. And so, that's their everyday norm. Where unfortunately, Thomas, this is your first year with a computer, I believe.
It's my second.
Second year, because 11th grade, yep.
I started. It's been worked out.
Yep. And so, there are, predominantly, I feel, probably, you know, even worse for the 9th graders. They had computers in 7th, 8th, and then no computers in 9th.
Yeah, so, I would say we need to do this so quick. And maybe, I mean, if we have to come back and do a special board meeting just to get this approved, I think we should move on it. I know that it's not going to resolve the issue on a timely manner, it doesn't seem like. But at least we get on the path of delivering those sooner than later.
And I'm going to kind of also offer something just to the Board of Education, is I think that since even our last meeting, we've spent extensive hours, Dr. Bergy, Mr. Roach, Cabinet, Mr. Mead, you know, high school principal, assistant principals, of just looking at over the next six months. You know, like, we have to immediately seal kind of this wound. And then what do we do moving forward when we start to replenish some of the older devices? And looking for different quotes and being able to look at the management system. The problem with the high school, and I just want to address the management system pieces, we expect our technology department to be able to push out things like the CASP app, or CASP icon, to each of the devices instead of having to log in individually. And so, when you have two devices playing on the same system, that's where we're running into places that are, it's a stopgap. So, if we did deploy a Chromebook right now to our 11th graders, they then are going to have to log into each individual and be able to download all the necessary programs that we would need on that device versus being able to ship it up to all with a click of a button.
Okay.
But that's why I said, if we're going to buy Chromebooks, and we could use them for the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders while we redeploy all of the rest of the devices that the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders have to the high school students. And if there's more that we need to buy to make sure everyone in the high school has a computer, then fine. But if the Chromebooks are less expensive and still will offer, from a programmatic standpoint, the technology that the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders need as fiduciaries, I think that's the right move for us.
Thank you. I would hope that that principle guides a lot of the decision-making. But what I wanted to bring up was, here we are again in the post 11th hour period of this issue, and it's first come to the Board's attention. And one of the reasons that it's come to the Board's attention is because I happened to have a conversation with a high school administrator, who shall remain nameless. And I was taking that New Amsterdam doctor approach, and how can I help? You know? How can I help? And he said, you know, we kind of really need the computers here. And through no fault of anybody up here, nor Mr. Mead or the students, it never came back to us. This, in order for this to have been done successfully, this should have been in front of us in the spring, okay? And it first comes back because we're prodded, and it's put on the agenda, and then it comes back. And then, we have to do our due diligence when, you know, writing a check for over half a million dollars in whatever direction that winds up, at least. And I want my Board here to be held harmless on this one, because we are doing our job, providing oversight to a major financial expense. That's what we're supposed to do. And here we are, now students are choking because of this, because of the timing of this. And I just wanted it to be clearly stated that this would have never come back to us had I not said something, or had people, this, we had a technology department that was in charge of this, that should have been on top of this. And among other things, you know, it's now left us again in this position, and it's disheartening. I just needed to say that. I'm looking at two quotes, quote number one, or quote seven and quote five. There's, the difference between the two computers, Thomas, I'm glad you pointed this out, by the way. They both have the 8GB of RAM, they both have a touchscreen. One is 7/10ths of an inch smaller, okay? One is an I3, one is an I5, okay? Otherwise, they're completely identical computers. The difference is $72,000 for the order. $72,000 is a lot of money. Some would even say it's a staff member. Some would even say it's a program, okay?
Right.
This is why we asked for this. Because I think you can get what you need and save the $72,000 and accomplish what Thomas was bringing up. So, everybody gets like computers, although it's 7/10ths of an inch smaller. But I think you can live with that.
Right.
Yeah.
Lighter. Somebody can beat the quote.
I, that's, it's for purchasing and stuff to work on the quotes. What I'm saying is, we already beat our own quote. We already have a device in here. So, what I am prepared to do tonight is however staff, right? The what, the how, okay? We talked about that, the what, the how. I am prepared to say, whatever you got to do to get computers in those kids' hands, do it, okay? We'll approve up to whatever this Board decides tonight to go for, and give you direction, whether it's taking it from the 4th and 5th grade and seeing if that's an option, and just giving them the new ones if you want to go in that direction. But I don't, I don't think this needs to come back to us. I think the Board can have a united vision on this, hopefully, give direction and move on. So, we can get computers in these kids' hands as soon as possible and make this right, which should have been right six months ago.
Do we have an idea of how many kids total in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade? No, how many kids have them, right? How many kids, if everyone's, right, so I'm saying how many are there? Generally, we have, Dustin, you had said in the past, around 300 kids per grade. So, if we have 900.
You want to know how many kids have computers? How many kids there are? And are they all 1:1? Because if they are, they all have them.
That was what we heard. But if there's 900 computers in the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade in this district, then that's certainly more than enough to cover the 9th and 10th graders. And then we can, 9th and 11th graders. And then we can spend our energy on what to replace.
Well, your magic number here is 655. If you have 655 computers in those lower grades, then you've hit it.
That's right.
That's your number.
So, is it, is it correct? Is it still standing around 300 kids per grade?
Excuse me, Dustin, can I ask a question first?
Those computers in the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, are those the same kind of computers, identical basically almost to what would go to the 9th and 11th graders that are comparable to what's in the 10th and the 12th grade?
Yeah, they are. Yeah. They're comparable.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
I really think that this is the solve. And we have time. I'm not saying do it now, I'm saying over the winter break, if we can anticipate, if we can give the authorization to go ahead and procure these, then perhaps over winter break, we can switch out, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders can spend their second semester on their new devices. While the high schoolers have, are currently able to have their.
And that might be a way to go with a lower grade option that 4th and 5th graders don't need as much bandwidth that a high schooler might need because of what they're using.
There's a chance that they could be purchased in time if we had to buy them for the 9th and 11th graders, that we wouldn't have to make that big switch. Is that a possibility? No.
But those are also the more expensive units. So, that would end up costing us significantly.
I think that it would be in time for, like, you know, the overall testing dates, but with all the practice dates that starts this week or next, right?
Yeah, in two weeks.
So.
It's our expectation.
So, here's just a total number of students, 715 in 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
So, we're covered for the 9th and 11th grade needs.
If they're all 1:1.
If they're all 1:1.
That you can find out tomorrow.
I'd like to suggest, I think staff has heard from the Board that the Board wants to get past this as soon as possible. My suggestion is that at our next meeting, staff come up to us with a comprehensive program for resolving the issue. How the computers are going to be redistributed among the grades, how many computers we need to purchase, at what prices. We have a comprehensive proposal before us, and we'll vote on it.
Mel, I agree. I think if time is of the essence, though, in their proposal, they can call for a meeting earlier than the 12th.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Does that work?
That would be great. We appreciate the flexibility.
So, you just have to be ready whenever you want. Say, we're ready, can you meet next week? And then we'll get the Board together.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And I do thank staff for getting us multiple quotes, for looking into the inventory of what exists. You know, so oftentimes, the Board asks for specific chunks of information, and we don't get exactly what we're looking for. I think we got what we needed to help move the conversation along a little faster today.
I assume Mr. Wade will be back, because he's going to be the point guy on this.
So, you know, from a financial perspective, but, you know, collaboratively with Mr. Mead and, you know, and Mr. Seaman with instruction, I mean, it's a very good collaboration, so it shouldn't be led just by finances. But Mr. Roach is a very important part of the conversation.
Thank you, colleagues. So, stop, Dr. Bergy, I just want to make sure you are, before I move on, you're clear on what we're doing here?
Personal.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to planning of facilities. The Jeff and Jeff Show.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
I move for the approval of change order number one to rebid $500-1819 Beverly Hills High School Phase 1 CCTV Security Camera Project.
A second.
Second. Okay. Any questions on this, colleagues?
Nice that we're going to save some money.
I was going to point out, this is, people always say our change orders only cost us money. I would like to point out that this actually is a change order that saves us money this time.
That's what these guys do. That's these guys. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12B.
I move approval of change order number one to bid number 400-1819 El Rodeo Modular Disconnect and Miscellaneous Demo Project.
A second? Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Okay. Second goes to Mr. Spitz on that one. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Moving on to 12C.
I'll make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve change order number one to bid number 600-1819 Beverly Vista School Site Enhancements, package number one.
My second.
Any questions on this? Okay. Can I ask a quick question on this show? I just, in looking at the scope of the work summary, it seemed that was, the scope of the work summary was the scope of the reconfiguration work. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, just remind me, and I apologize, because only this change order was attached, what was the original scope of work for Fast Track? Was that that we've attached this contract to?
The original base bid scope of work was accumulation of 28 separate enhancements to the Beverly Vista campus from the ADA ramp out front to the reading green area of the synthetic turf. Both of those two, the city had us increase the size of the sidewalk replacement out front for the ADA ramp. Resulted in a change order. Collectively, the synthetic turf area was increased on the south, so that was resulted in a change order. Going, moving forward with the base bid was the conversion of one of the kindergarten rooms to the dance studio, base bid. Additional sink and flooring, converting a classroom into an art center. The new storage container, we painted 400 doors and frames and windows.
So, it was all, all of the work on the original contract was reconfiguration-based? This was just the additional work?
Correct.
Okay, that's, only because it wasn't attached, so I didn't get a chance to review the original amount? That's, that's, that's my question more than.
These were enhancements to the enhancements, on the fly.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. 12D. 12D.
I have moved for the accept as complete the Beverly Hills High School Phase One CCTV Security Camera Project and authorized filing of a notice of completion.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
I might point that this also is a reduced amount on the contract.
Thank you for pointing that out. We are on a roll.
I move to accept as complete the El Rodeo Modular Disconnect and Miscellaneous Demo Project and authorized filing of a notice of completion.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And 12F.
I'll make a motion to accept as complete bid number 600-1819 Beverly Vista School Site Enhancements, package number one, and authorized filing of a notice of completion.
My second.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Another wonderfully money-saving Jeff and Jeff Show. Moving on to board policies. I know there was a discussion about possibly because of the absence of Mr. Roach that we were going to table some of these. Mr. Spitz, did you want to table the lot of these or was it just the one?
Just, just C.
C, okay.
Credit card.
Okay. So let's.
I do have one comment on that, so.
Well, what we could do is we'll do a motion to table, so it's on the floor, and then you can make your comment regarding that issue. So let's move to 13A, the first reading of board policy, 3314.
I move approval of the first reading of board policy, 3314 Payments for Goods and Services. I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to 13B.
I move approval of second reading of Administrative Regulation 3314 Payment for Goods and Services.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Discussions?
I just want to point out, if I may, that I had asked about this earlier, you know, how are, how is the adoption of all these policies in comparison to other districts? And the answer that I got, I thought was very much worth sharing with the public, that we are ahead of most districts, if not very much ahead. And so I think that that is great work. And, and just really, loose, these are very loose ends that needed to be tied up, so I'm very happy and pleased to see that we are adopting these policies tonight. And I thank Mr. Wade because he really did a lot of the research.
He did.
And our finance committee.
Okay, so let's make a, a motion to table 13C.
I move to table item Administrative Regulation 3314.1 Regarding the Credit Card.
Did I, yeah, we voted for B, right?
We didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The allergies. Okay, sorry, back it up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries now. Motion to table 13C, please.
I move to table 13C Approval of Second Reading of New Administrative Regulation, District Issuing Credit Card Use.
I would second that.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Yeah. I have 13 or 14 suggestions in this that I'd like the chance to sit down with Mr. Roach and review them, and I think that they would, there will be improvements to bring before the board. But there is one item that I would like to recommend to the board now about, about this, and I'll tell you what it is. With regard to credit card issuance and use. I would like to see something added to the bottom of this, of this administrative regulation, and that will be the words read and acknowledged, and a signature line and a date line. And I would like to see every district staff member who has issued a credit card have an opportunity to read this, sign it. To read, to read this, sign it and date it, and have it in his file, his, her file, for two reasons. First, I think that just, it's a good statement to make to an employee who's been issued a credit card to know that there are regulations, tight regulations on the use of a credit card. And the other reason to have a signature and a date on it is that if there is a violation, the employee isn't in a position to say, "Well, I didn't know about that." So I think that, and, and once we finalize it, I'd like to see every staff member who has a card now sign and date this and put it in his file.
So I just want to comment, I, I think that that's a reasonable request that is, is easy to adhere to. When I was speaking to Mr. Roach, we thought that it would be appropriate to, you know, not just have the, the signature page, but to also, those employees that do have a district credit card, that they would go through some training before signing, because I think it's important that people understand why we're, we're asking people to do the things that we are. So we, we've talked about that, that's something that we can do, and I think this is a great suggestion, that at the end of that training would be an appropriate time for them to sign, because we just went through all the expectations and then they have an opportunity to ask any questions.
The other thing I, if I may, say about all of these regulations that are coming before us to control expenditures, I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Roach, because this came before the, the District Finance Committee, and, and Mr. Roach took the responsibility of finding these policies and regula, and administrative regulations. I think he did a, an excellent job. I'm sorry he's not here to hear this.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
Say it again.
Okay, so we have the motion to table on the, on the, no, we already have a second, I just need to vote for it. So, all in favor of tabling this, we'll bring it up at the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Can I get the D, E, and F in one motion? Is that possible? They're all related to the same.
I move approval of second, second reading of the board policy, 3350 Travel Expenses, and approval of second reading of new administrative regulation, 3350 Travel Expenses, and approval of second reading of new exhibit, 3350 Travel Expenses.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Discussion before I
Yes.
Begin. Mr. Spitz?
Mr. Margul. I have one question about item E.
Uh huh.
And that's the travel expenses. In one area, one section here, expense reimbursement, private car, item number six, it says, "Travel expenses shall not be accumulated over more than a three-month period." I think it ought to be less than a three-month period. I don't think travel expenses ought to be accumulated over a three-month period. I think that one month from the time that an expense is incurred is long enough. So I'd like to suggest that that be reconsidered.
Staff is bringing that up to respond, I assume? Is that?
So we were just, for clarification, do you mean that, that you couldn't accumulate, so you, that you would turn in that information after a month and not hold on to it for 90 days? Is that?
Yeah, I don't think it should be held on to for 90 days if, if, at the most, 60 days.
Makes sense.
You know, 90 days, it's pretty old.
The credit card, you have to pay.
And
My sex here.
When an expense account is turned in, presumably somebody is going to review it. And if you're reviewing something that's already three months old,
Well, you're new.
It's too old.
Okay. And we do have that process in place, but I agree, after a few months, it's, it does
get to be old. So, but we do have an approval process in place and, you know, looking, having to ensure that the receipts are there, and, you know, so we do have a, a kind of a chain of events for that, a check and balance.
Can we split the difference at 45 days?
Since the cred, well, the credit cards are due, what, 30 days or 45 days? It's 30 days, so it makes sense to do it monthly.
Yeah, but you get, it, it goes for 30 days and then they, and then it takes a while to get the actual bill, so, so 45 to 60 days is
45 days. My carry. But it's not always the, on the credit card. A lot of times when we're traveling for conferences or whatever, we have receipts from the hotel, we have receipts from the dinners, we have receipts that we can turn in, and that's immediate.
But the credit, I guess.
Mileage, you just have to add up.
This, this specifically relates to private car use, by the way.
Yeah.
This is just, just under private car use, so.
Private car use.
Right, so I, I don't, I just wonder, I mean, how often does this actually come up?
You don't get charged on a credit card for using your private car, right? Okay.
Would there be, would there be an issue changing to 45 days?
I don't think so. I, I'm not aware of, of an idea, you know, at this time, that would be an impact.
I, I don't mind adding that. Who made the, the motion for this?
Mel.
Mel, so you can remake your motion if you want, with that caveat in there, and then they can.
I made the motion.
Oh, Tristan, then you need to, okay, then you can either accept that as a friendly amendment, and then she can second that, if you agree.
Are you amenable to 45 days?
Okay. So we're just, so it's just line item six under private car use? That's what we're changing?
45 days.
45 days, okay?
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to say on these issues. Oh, sure, go ahead.
I'm, one of the questions that I had on all of these regulations was the monitoring of them. And I don't see any provisions for monitoring them and, and so on, so, not that they may have to be written in there right now, but I think there needs to be, it's not, how are they going to be monitored and, and who's going to, you know, so that people, that the employees know, I mean, so that our people know, that in other words, I like Mel's idea that they have to read it and sign it. I think they need to read and sign all of these as, so that they have awareness of what they, and then, because I, right now, I don't see any way of controlling it, and that's something I would like to see.
If I may, I, I think there is a way. All expense accounts are turned into the business office, and they are, they must be signed and approved, I think, and, and so.
With, with the proper documentation.
I think the control is there.
We, we do have that.
I think the control is there.
Yep.
What I was going to say, what we don't have is, and I, we don't have a budget on this. Right now, if you look at our policies, it's a potential free-for-all. There's nothing limiting how much can be spent on a credit card, not per transaction, because that's in there, but I'm talking about overall for travel expenses. Mostly, I'm thinking about travel expenses, conferences, those kind of things. So whoever will be using the credit card, there should be a ceiling, that we should kind of not try to break every year, so we can actually budget. What I'd like to know, if Mr. Roach isn't here, is I would ask the question, it's an overall, general question regarding all of these board policies, is what is our annual budget on these, and what is the actual expenditures? And are we going over budget? And does the budget reflect the reality? And do we need to tighten controls to come within budget on these? He's not here tonight to answer these, but hopefully we can bring these questions back and get those answered.
Sure.
I think that that's been part of the discussion at the, at the District Finance Committee.
Yeah.
And so I think that it might be well to have them pour over that with Mr. Roach.
Okay.
And see what they come up to.
Great. To the board. Once again, what? How?
And also, I just want to know, like, what, how are we issuing these, or how many are being issued? What is the policy for that, or best practice for that, if we were, we were to compare ourselves to other districts? You know, I've been told it's usually four to three. I think Mr. Roach even said to me, there was, where, where he came from, it was three credit card users, or four, I can't remember, actually. But that's something for us to, to know, just, just so that we have better control as well.
Sure. I, I can provide you with that information. Who has it? Okay.
But I'm saying, like, as, as we move forward, we might want to rethink, you know, I'm not sure what we do right now, I'm not saying I know what we do, I'm just saying, I, I would like to follow best, best practice for the best outcomes for better controls. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I'll send my, I'll send my questions to you and Mr. Roach, so we don't have, you don't have to write them all down right now.
Okay.
All right, so, those three issues, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries with that correction of 45 days. Okay, thank you, colleagues. Professional and official business. So I had asked for this to be on here, after having the seedlings planted earlier in the year, I believe, on this topic, but we never brought it back, so it's time to start getting things back on the table that deal with education. What I was going to talk about, examine, explore, request is a financial literacy course requirement for high school graduation. We are very behind the curve as a district in this area. I went online and did some research with the California Department of Education. There are robust curriculums that are actually K-12 financial literacy curriculums. I wouldn't start all over the district at once, I would start, like you said at the top, work our way down, we've learned our lesson, but I think it's of utmost importance for our student population to have a semester-long, not a year-long, a semester-long course tied to the health semester, so it can be a year-long health, financial literacy, before we give them a ca, a diploma and put them out in the real world, because I think that there's a huge section of our, of our community that just, and, and this is across the nation. This is why there's, there's big movements for financial literacy in schools, is because it's not being taught in most homes. People go to college, they get tempted, buy a free T-shirt, sign up for a credit card, and there goes a life of debt. So I think we need to help out in that arena and give our students the opportunity in high school. My suggestion would be, it would commence with the class of 2024, because you would, it would, you know, I wouldn't hold any class before that responsible because of their scheduling, they would have to know it coming in as freshmen. We already know health is both a summer school and a regular school-year class, this can be added on as, as both options, or tagged on as a second semester for health, or even, it doesn't matter which order you do it in, but I think it's very, very important. Some of the things I looked at under the, sorry, let me open my notes here. Pardon me. In 12th grade, what I noticed was the students, in this particular curriculum from the CD, students learn three basic functions of the Federal Reserve System, participate in banking activities, learn about the fractional reserve banking system, they would have already learned about credit card use and all that stuff going into that, so all of those things, checking accounts, savings accounts, portfolios, those, those all should be part of the conversation. It's real-world stuff, and I think that if students were able to practice history and math through real, real-world experiences, the learning curve would be greater, right? If you can actually apply it, it would be greater. That's my thought on that. I have one other thought that I would like to add, but I want to go around and get my colleagues' opinions on this issue. So I'll start down with Thomas.
Yeah, so I mean, there is a semester-long economics course, but I don't believe it fully teaches financial literacy that you are alluding to. We do learn about some financial matters, but not to the full extent. I have like a different topic to discuss about the graduation requirement. We have the A through G requirement, which is the product of the UC Cal State system. The requirements are heavily geared towards four-year universities, which is great, and this is very important, but I do feel like a lot of students are left out of the loop that aren't going to, that are going to be pursuing a career or not going to college after. Additionally, students who challenge themselves academically and want to apply to selective universities and colleges are not able to fully utilize all the electives that are offered at the high school. And additionally, as we continue to grow the CTE program with more career technical style courses, students are going to have difficulty in trying to fit all these courses in their schedule, while also trying to complete the A through G requirements. So I believe that requirements do not give students enough flexibility, so that's my, you know.
Thank you, Thomas. That actually has been long debated. Let me, let me get back to you on that, because I need to hear my colleagues' thoughts on just the financial literacy aspect, so we can either think about giving direction or not on that issue, but thank you for the share, and I do, I do know what's encompassed in the economics course, and it's, it's more of a bird's eye view on a lot of stuff, and very practical, very practical, but there's, there's, financial literacy is something it's
In-person finance, yeah.
Keen to, learning how to do your own laundry. You know, it's that kind of life skill that you were going to use, you know? Uh, Mr. Spitz.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think you have a very, a very excellent recommendation. I'm all for it. Um, and, um, I think, I think staff should look into it and come up with a recommendation of how to feed it into our system. Um, it's one, I think it's one of the best things we could do for our students. Um, as far as, um, Thomas's thoughts about, uh, about the graduation requirements, though, um, that is an issue. And in the past, we have discussed, uh, the idea of different pathways to graduation. And, um, it's, 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 it's a complicated question. But it, it deserves, uh, it deserves consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
Um, so I actually agree with both. I think that, uh, financial literacy class would be tremendous for our students. Um, I would like to see it option, offered as an option first, and then a requirement, kind of roll out, so that it's an option, and students can take advantage of it if they want to as an elective, before it's a requirement.
So, to answer that, I, I suggested that it can start next year, but it wouldn't be required till the class of two thousand and twenty-four.
Yes, so totally agree with that. Um, I also, um, agree with Mr. Rukupra and Mr. Spitz. I think that we need to have alternative pathways for our students, because not all of our students are headed down that path for UC and, and Cal State. Um, so I think we're doing them a disservice by not offering an alternative pathway, for sure. It's definitely something we should look at and, and discuss.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Marcus?
When I was running for school board, the subject of the A through G requirements came up. And at that time, I said that not one size fits all, and there should be other pathways. So I'm totally in agreement with everybody here. And the fact that many of our students do not go on, or maybe they're, go on with some learning and some vocational skills and so on. So, I personally agree with everything that's been said so far. And that, um, just a, a sidelight that, on this class that you're offering as with, um, that could be an alternative to health.
An alternative addition.
In addition to it, yeah. But the problem would be that many of the students take health in the summer school program. And so it leaves it with another, they were trying to get rid of the class that is that half-year class. And so now they're still left with another half-year class. It's just a thought, and I didn't wanna bring that.
And to that, I will say, when they take health in the summer, it's actually half of the summer school session class. So you can actually take health, and if they, if it went in that direction, health and financial literacy in the summer.
Okay, so they would.
And hopefully, the curriculum will be built the same way.
Yeah.
I don't profit from it, I don't.
Is that what you were gonna, you were gonna say that?
No, I'm just joking. That they can, we're hoping that we'll be able to offer a independent learning center experience for summer school through BHF this summer. So I was gonna say, or they can also take it online through us versus doing it externally, like what a lot of students have done in the past, with our support.
Ms. Hacker?
Thank you.
So I have a question first. I'm glad that the issue of health has come up. I understand that it's, is it still a requirement for us to health?
Correct, for B G.
B H U S D, but for the state. Do they still mandate that?
There, there are state standards that align with the health curriculum, but it is not a mandated, I do not have to turn in any data that supports our students have completed the health process.
So is that something that the administration is looking to maybe undo in the future? Or are we gonna continue?
I, I, if I had a crystal ball, I would say that as we, as the state of California is rebounding since 'oh eight, they're starting to re-implement things. So the five, um, sorry, five, seven, and ten health requirements. So in fifth grade, seventh grade, and eleventh, or tenth grade, um, they're, they have just released new state standards. So Heather Godin and Eric Menas had just attended a conference for us last spring on those updates, and we've actually made some changes in, um, within what we're delivering. I'd be afraid to make the recommendation of removing that health requirement now, because then we might be reinstating that.
Later.
Now that CD is growing again, since those major cuts in 'oh eight.
And one of the, one of the, one of the issues that we had was when it was taught under biology, let's say.
Correct.
The biology teachers were having a very difficult time getting to their own biology curriculum.
Correct.
Because of the health.
The reason I ask, because a lot of parents do, do point out that a lot of districts don't do this. And I, I wonder, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason why we're still doing it, but it makes sense why you wouldn't wanna discontinue it. I mean, considering the changes that might be coming down.
Yeah.
But, um, to, to, I do believe that the, um, CTE offers a course in financial planning. Am I not correct on that?
Correct. I, I was gonna kinda jump in there, uh, for a second, is, um, there's actually two courses that are now being delivered in the district that will help fill the void of this graduation requirement, um, if we were to relook at the curriculum. So CC Gabade, Gabay, sorry, my apologies, um, who is one of our career technical education teachers here at BHHS, delivers an intro to personal finance course that does cover the financial literacy aspect, if you look at the true definition. And it's also dual-enrolled, which means that the students will get Business Forty-Five as credit at SMC. So we already offered two sections of that, um, last year and this year at BHHS. In addition, Mark Friend has, um, really taken the reins at the middle school of doing the intro to finance course to a six, seventh, and eighth graders as an elective. And we are actually in the works of renaming it to consumer finance, because a lot, I just lied to you, personal finance, because of the information of which is delivered in the class, has really morphed around that conversation around just that financial literacy, um, covering, you know, and I'm gonna read directly even from their own words of, um, uh, you know, checking, savings, borrowing, investing, and budgeting.
Okay.
Are the five, five major topics that, but both of them wanna tackle. Um, but, you know, it, it's nice, because we had just reopened, and I'm gonna kinda add, is that we had just opened in May of fourteen of two thousand and nineteen, the graduation requirements conversation, when we were able to extend the, um, online courses and stuff like that for students to be able to take. And so this is very timely to be able to relook at that in adding additional requirements.
So, I agree with everything that Thomas Rukuparo just said, and I really appreciate that. And, and in light of our requirements, our AG requirements that are currently and presently, you know, the way we operate, I think that to add something else right now would be hard, because a lot of these students, whether they are pursuing, you know, the, the very academic, um, path, or whether they're involved in a pathway that leads to other alternative education, higher education. These students are already doing internships, they're already doing sports, they have AP classes, so they're pursuing the academic path, as I just said. And to add more, I think, is, is difficult for these students. If you look at homework and the demands after school. So, I would be, I, I would say, if there's a way we can deliver this in an alternative format, where it's not a class, maybe a workshop, maybe three workshops required at some time before they graduate, um, or online. Anything that makes, you know, where, where we are actually delivering the, the, the subjects that we want to address in this class, or however you wanna call it, a workshop, could be a, um, maybe a one-day conference, I'm not sure. Um, or given the, or, or it could be fulfilled by taking the class that Myra, is it Myra Gabay?
Uh, CC.
CC, yes. That Mrs. Gabay, um, introduces in her, and, and, you know, through her, through her class. So, it could be a very, you know, different options, just as long as students are able to fulfill those requirements that we're looking to be fulfilled. But I wouldn't, I, I would be a little hesitant at this moment to say, let's go and create a class and make that a requirement for graduation at this moment. And I, I do understand that Mr. Margot made the suggestion that this be a pilot program, maybe for the first year, or second year, or not make it mandatory. But, um, I think we have so much going on already, these students have so much going on, that it, it, it just, it's just a lot more to reint, to introduce one more thing on top of everything else that they have going on. So, if you could do it online, if you could do it, I, I think that those would be wonderful work, uh, alternatives. But I'm not ready to say yes for a class. What do you think, Thomas?
Um, I mean, is it your turn?
Well, I wanted, I wanted to respond.
I wanted to ask you as a student.
Yes, I agree, but I think the biggest thing is, is that if there's gonna be work outside of the class with it. And if there's gonna be homework and stuff, then it's different. I think it could be like a, like a learning experience class, where you're practicing the, the techniques and stuff, and learning about it in class without having to take home a lot of work. That would be beneficial, I think, without adding too much, you know, stress and more coursework to students.
We, we, we think about, um, on the board, and then as a parent, when a child graduates from our school district, what knowledge do we want them armed with? Right? But what, we, we fill them with so many things that are state requirements for graduation, per se, that they'll never use in their life. But we don't give them tools that they're actually going to use. And I think we're doing them a disservice. Now, how we deliver that, once again, up to you guys. I don't care. But I think that there should be, even if the kids test out of it, like they would in college. You could test out of classes in college. Test out of it. If you know it, test out of it. I don't have a problem with that. But they should prove that they know how to manage their finances once they graduate. Because when you're eighteen, you are legally an adult, and you can legally do whatever you want. And you could, you could completely separate yourself from your family if you so choose, but you better have the knowledge of how to take care of yourself and pay your rent, pay the bills, and put food on the table, and all of those things. That if you, that if you go through public school system, especially in Beverly Hills, you probably didn't have to think about, right? You don't have to think about, well, how am I paying for my next meal? Parents do, but you don't. Right? So this is the impetus of this. This is why I thought about this, because I think that, that it is behoven to a school district, you know, we talk about even in our vision and our mission statement, to have our students be college and career-ready. There's, there's nothing about financial literacy that's not part of a college or career. It's all part of it. So we want, we should, I, it doesn't have to be a heavily-involved, and, and, Mrs. Hacker, I agree, may not have to be a semester-long course. However it is delivered, it should still be, because we made other things requirements for graduation. There's that, there's, by starting as freshmen, there's that, kind of, the nod, the, the navviance, and all of those things that students have to hit those bullet points before they graduate. That's not a class, but it's things students have to do. So however we decide this, but I, once again, I leave that to staff to come up with. I was trying to get the temperature of the board on this, so we can give staff direction about, we would like to see our students have more of a grasp on financial literacy before they receive a diploma. If that's a direction that, that we support and that we can deliver in an acceptable way, I would like to see that happen. So that's what I was looking for on that issue. The A through G issue, totally different ballgame, and yes, it does need to be discussed. Um, it needs to be discussed thoroughly, because it's, it's time to bring that back up, but.
I mean, I just saw graduation requirements, so I.
Right, no, and that's, that's why I le, I left it specifically like that, so we can have an open conversation about that. So, um, I, I, I would then ask my colleagues, um, do I have support in at least giving staff direction to look into, to putting something into effect that would, that would be, um, mandatory for the class of two thousand and twenty-four to achieve some sort of financial literacy knowledge? However, online classes, workshops, whatever you guys wanna come up with, I'll leave that to you. But, do I have direction to support that at least? Yes? Yes? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we'll put that out there, see what it comes back with.
Perfect. What I'll do is, uh, what we'll do is be able to bring back a presentation to you guys the following board meeting with a variety of different ways. One of the benefits of me being from Illinois, just saying, is it was a graduation requirement in the state of Illinois, and so we were able to fulfill the financial literacy in a multitude of different ways, whether a competency exam.
Okay.
Uh, middle school. And so I'll bring a comprehensive presentation back to you guys to be able to vote on that, because there will be a change in the board policy, which is the sixty-one forty-six.
Okay.
And so I'll have to be able to bring that back.
Yeah, and that's fine. And, um, just, just to show as a district, we are, these are the things that are important to us. When we, when we graduate students out into the world, we wanna know that they have a certain skill set. So along those lines, um, before I turn it over to board comments, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was community service for high school students. I think a lot of our high school students do live in a bubble, and I, and I, there are wonderful students in this room tonight that know both sides of the coin. Okay? They know the other, how the other half lives. So I do respect your experiences, um, both of you that I'm looking at, and the work you've done in the community. Um, this is for more of a mass, uh, set, but, um, we require community service hours from our high school students.
Correct.
But we don't dictate what those hours should be. Right? We have that. And I think, I think personally, this is just me, students who graduate from our high school should have experience working in a shelter, in a soup kitchen, um, anything, so they really get a taste of what the world is like outside of Beverly Hills. Because I think some people will never see that if we don't give it to them. I know that almost every middle school student has to go to the Museum of tolerance, I believe, at some point, and if not, they should. But I believe they do. Yeah. So it's, it's akin, it's akin to that. It's, it's giving the students an experience they may or may not ever have. It's very easy to get community service forms signed off by a local person, and, you know, you helped out here, you helped out at Wolfstock next week, whatever it is, you get a community service. But that doesn't really show what's happening in the world. And I think that goes hand in hand with my other suggestion about financial literacy, is there's a world out there that people just don't understand, and it's behoven to us to show them that. So, something I wanted to talk about and see if my colleagues were interested in is that certain community service in the high school, whether we provide that. Because I know for years, many, many decades, they've taken kids to Albion Street every year. They still do that, that's a school. Um, it's a great thing, but how many students go to that? Right? How many students get to go and see how that school district is teaching that demographic? And how different it is from the experience we have? Maybe dozens of kids, not even a hundred kids get to see that? What? Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty? Okay. Okay, so it's very, very few amount of kids, and that's, and you're still, Albion Street is a unique place. I, I went once for KBEV, I went and filmed it. So, um, I, I have fond memories of it, and it's, um, it's an interesting place. It still doesn't allow students to see a lot of the, the impoverished and hungry people that are in the world, and what's being done, um, and how they can be a part of that and be exposed to some of the issues if they take, especially if they take an economics class, and you understand economics, that's economics. I mean, that's real-world economics. Why are people homeless? Why, why is this happening? What's, what's, how are we spending money feeding people? Um, I, it was something that I wanted to bring up, because it's, it's important to me, and I think it should, it should be important to everybody. Helping people should be important to everybody, and, oh, that's my thought. So I'll go around, and then I'll be done talking tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that, but then we get into the issue of almost parenting the children and, and controlling, continuing to control their life. And if we're gonna continue to add requirements, we have to find a way to subtract some, because adding more is.
But they have to do community service anyway? Correct?
I don't, I don't believe so. That's.
It's not a graduation requirement. So if they're in service learning, or if they're in certain leadership organizations, like MSA requires, um, community service-based.
National Honor Society.
National Honor Society is ten per year.
Right.
Um, so collectively, there's a ton of opportunities within the high school that already demand community service, but it is a regulated, whether it's be like five freshman year, ten sophomore year, that way.
And I mean, I do love the.
I'll say something.
I mean, community service, I get involved in the, in the community and elsewhere, but, yeah, it gets a little cutting it close with parenting and controlling that.
No?
Well, I understand, uh, I understand where you're coming from. I understand your point, uh, Mr. Margot. Um, but again, making too many things graduation requirements, uh, you might give some thought to whether we have the responsibility taking over parenting kids. Some, 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 some part of, of kids' educations need to be delivered by their parents, it seems to me.
One would hope.
This is, this is interesting. My inclination is to support it. I don't know necessarily as a graduation requirement, but I absolutely believe in the power and the importance of our kids having these experiences that they would not otherwise have. So I'm not gonna say I know exactly how that should be implemented, um, but I absolutely believe as a core value that it's something that we should try to help facilitate. Um, because, you know, there are a lot of families that don't, not that that's not their value, but that don't make the effort to actually go have those experiences. And I think those are really important when we're talking about turning kids out into the world that are college and career-ready. They're gonna encounter, encounter stuff like this. They're gonna need to have sensitivity to things like that. So the more experiences they have in those environments, I think the more compassionate and well-rounded they will end up being as adults. So while I don't wanna take on the responsibility of parenting all of the children, I definitely think educationally, it's a sound choice. I think it's important for kids to learn compassion, um, and to be well-rounded in that way.
I would be.
I'd definitely be interested in continuing to talk about.
Thank you. And I just wanna respond to that comment about parenting. Um, it's exposure, it's not parenting. And I think that, um, schools, uh, expose students to, to new things from kindergarten on. That's our practice. We expose them to books, experiences, sports, all of these things, they learn in schools, right? Some kids learn how to throw a ball in school. Parents could've taught them that, but they learned it in school. So I, I think there's a, definitely not even a fine line between the idea of this being parenting or not. I think it's experiences and exposing kids to experiences when, I think it was Mr., I can't remember the teacher's name, Deutsch or something, that took the kids to Russia-
Mr. Dersch.
Mr. Dersch, that took the kids to Russia. That's an experience. I mean, sure, parents could take their kids to Russia, and one could say that's parenting as well. So I believe it's along those lines, but the school provided that opportunity. Yes, it wasn't a graduation requirement, it was, it was optional, but it was still an amazing opportunity for students. And I'm just saying, listen, I, once again, I'm not going to dictate the how. I just think that, that a lot of students don't see that side of life, and it's a very real side, especially in Southern California, and, and the rest of the country, but, you know.
I also, I will also say, I think it actually is in line with our P B I S, and when we talk about positive behavior reinforcement, and, you know, cultivating a culture where students are sensitive and are rewarded for positive things, I think that's a great avenue to explore, where they are able to get extra points, extra credits, extra whatever for that type of endeavor. So I'm, I am supportive of it.
Can I just say, it, it does include a missing piece, you know, as we're busy and we're going through with all of our requirements, it does, it does put community back into our, our school system, because it, it does kind of force you out of your comfort zone to get experiences in different areas, and the, the community should, should benefit from our students, you know, giving back to the community that raised them.
Mrs. Marcus?
I would just like to say that I see this as a very, very good opportunity for the students to work together in an A S B situation, where maybe every specific grade level would have a charity, or a, a type of program that they would, maybe it's at the food shelter, or it's dishing out food, or something like that, where they do it as a group, and they really get to feel some kind of, really feeling good about it. And I think that this type of project that could be undertaken by the student body at the high school, I know they do some of that already, and I think that they could probably extend it a little bit, but to make it a requirement, I'm not sure that I would, I would think that it would be like something that we could have the parents try to encourage their children to do this for the sake of just doing it, so they will feel good about it. As you said, the positive behavior that you'd get out of this, and the, and the feeling that you're doing something for the community, and really, and then being wide awake to what's going on out there, and who has and who has not, I think is very important. So I would love to see this as a, a project within the school, with the student body, and, and so on, so that would be my thought about it.
Thank you.
So, you know, I want to say, I, I didn't grow up in Beverly Hills, but I have to tell you, I've been impressed with the education of, of our students in that it really truly promotes community service from kindergarten on. I, I can tell you that, you know, just, just, just thinking back of, you know, between the students, the teachers that my, my, my kids have had, I think everyone from kindergarten to, I would say, eighth grade, they had something that they were working towards, whether it was through a class or a teacher, and they raised awareness about a particular issue. So I would say Beverly Hills is a very giving community, and it is also a very conscious community about, you know, paying it forward. I, I'm always surprised to hear conversations around the table from students that come over and just tell us, oh, I'm doing this in this part of the country on, you know, during the summer with my family, or with my temple, or with my church, and it's really, it's really enlightening, and it just, and these are usually high school students who have continued that great work that they started when they were in elementary or in junior high. Having said that, I think there's ways where, maybe through economics, when they're, when students are taking an economics class, maybe there's an assignment that can, that can require students going to, you know, they can give them, you know, a list of choices to make, you know, where, where it requires activities similar to the ones that you were talking about, Mr. Margot, where they go and they feed the hungry, or they do, or maybe they, they coordinate with the elementary schools that do a lot of giving. They do, they do feed the hungry, they, they do it repeatedly. I think Horseman still continues to do that, not just during the Christmas time, but I think they, they do that throughout the year, where they make sandwiches, and they, they, some of the students will actually go down there with their parents and take the, the food. So, and they, they, they do all kinds of community service outreach activities throughout the year. So maybe it's something that we can do, not as a requirement, but as part of something that we already have in place. Alternatively to that, I think that it really is up to the student to choose the activities they want to be involved with, but maybe we can give them direction, and provide them with choices.
Thank you, colleagues. The problem I'm hearing is that we don't want to have any more requirements for our students, but I, I, I don't, I don't care. I, there's a, it's great to graduate robots, it's terrific that we can do that, but we're not graduating humans. And as, there's a lack of humanity, and I'm sorry to say this, there's a lack of humanity that this school, we can't tell teachers what assignments they should do, we can't tell them that. The only thing we could do is graduation requirements. As a board, that's what we can discuss, that's why it's under the auspices. If all the teachers were out there doing stuff like this, we wouldn't have to talk about it.
But the middle school, I do know that they get, they, they do obtain a seal on their, on their diploma if they gave, I think, over 100 hours of community service through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Am I not right about that?
That's correct.
But, but, but the way to obtain, the way to obtain those community hours is very easy.
Very loosey-goosey.
And it's not, it's not monitored, and it doesn't provide students with exposure, once again, exposure to something that they normally would never see. So-
So maybe that needs to be addressed.
Listen, it's clear that there's no support for this right now, and I get that, and that's, that's the part of governance, and I appreciate that, but I would hope that, that there can be a reconsideration of this. Perhaps staff, you know, can think about it, and I, and I thank everybody for the conversation. That's, that's the, the discourse that we have as a, as a functional board. I just think it's important to instill just as much humanity as it is, and knowledge and chemistry and all of that into our students, and, and to the argument that it's parenting. Well, I have to say that our school district has been parenting this community for a very long time. If we weren't, there wouldn't be kids breaking sinks off the wall in our own school, okay? That's, that's because there's a lack of parenting. So we have to step in and do our jobs, and this is something, when you can do something, you do it. And if the middle schools are all taking their kids at some point to see the Museum of Tolerance, that's one field trip in three years, that they go get exposed to something that they normally wouldn't get exposed to. That's what I'm asking, right? So we arrange for one field trip, so that every student has an opportunity at one point, either one grade that does it, maybe whatever's applicable to the curriculum of that grade, and get them out to a field trip, and let them go work, and serve, serve food in the shelter, or whatever, whatever the chosen thing is, just so they can get out there in the world and see what it's like. That's, that's what I'm pushing for. And I think you say it's a graduation requirement, I'm saying it would be a school activity. You know, we provide-
I mean, it was just-
We provide the buses.
It was packaged differently.
We provide the buses, we provide the, the opportunity, we make the arrangements, we spend a little more time thinking about other people than ourselves. That's what I'm saying.
I support it.
Okay. That's that. Thank you very much, colleagues. Let's go to board communications.
So there are four events coming up. The Beverly Hills High School Fall Play will be held at Horseman Auditorium on Thursday, November 14th, Friday, November 15th, and Saturday, November 16th at 7:00 P. M. This year's play is the Imaginary Innuendo. The Beverly Hills Science Fair is next Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you to B H F, for sponsoring this event. And the Beverly Hills High School Blood Drive is December 5th. I believe last week I said December 3rd, correction, December 5th. And also, good luck to all seniors who are submitting early applications on Friday.
Just want to mention that I know that we're all mindful of the horrific fires that have been burning and not so far away from us. We're a very fortunate community, not to, not to have those fires right down on top of us, but they're not far away. And I know that Mr. Roach isn't here because he has a home in Sonoma, and, and has to be up there at the moment. So we have to be mindful of what's going on around us. I think some of us have friends and relatives who have had to pack, pack up, and be ready to leave, and so it's a tough time, tough time near us.
I just wanted to congratulate and thank the B V P T A for pulling off a miraculous and wonderful Halloween night for the middle school students as their first real social gathering as a middle school. I'm also looking forward to the science fair. I'm judging at the science fair for the second year in a row, which I'm very excited about, so that's coming up, and thank you, Thomas, for mentioning that. And not to beat a dead horse, but I just want to be on record again and advocate for our, as far as our district calendar is concerned, I believe that it's imperative for our stakeholders to have representation. I know that we're elected officials, I know that we represent the community, but C S B A talks about how important it is when we have big decisions like this, that we have stakeholder buy-in. So I just want to go on record again and say, I believe a survey would be appropriate for our families, and students, and teachers.
Thank you.
I would just like to mention that this week that I attended the Professional Development Day at Beverly Vista, and I, as a teacher, I know that many times I looked on the Professional Development Days as not that great, or what have you, but I need to compliment the one that I, and I'm sure they were good at all three schools, there are four schools that where they were held, but I was particularly impressed with the involvement, the organization, and the level at which the various sessions were taught. I spent a great amount of time there in some of the sessions, and it really made me thankful that this particular session was so well-done, and I want to congratulate the faculty for organizing it. It was super.
I just want to thank Mr. Margot for bringing these issues that revolve around education. I'm sorry you didn't get the outcome you were looking for, but I think it's a good start for a healthy discussion that I think hopefully will lead somewhere in the near future, and I think it can be done in some alternative way-
Thank you.
-without making a requirement. So there is hope along those lines.
Oh, I'll get it.
Yes, I, I know we will. And the B V, I, I've heard nothing but great accolades for the B V P T A, and what they pulled off this last weekend with their first gathering, community gathering for B V, and as well as, as Dr. Bregge has, has already discussed, the Hawthorne Pumpkin Patch Harvest, or what was it, Harvest?
Fall Harvest.
The Fall Harvest. See, we don't even know the name, but yes, that was really well-done, and Horseman did a beautiful job with Multicultural Week, and so has to them, and they really did a nice job. And happy birthday to Dustin Seaman, who's turning-
Forty-one.
I was, fourteen.
Thirty-five.
No, you don't. Happy birthday, I hope, no, his birthday is on D-Day, Friday, yes. And good luck to everyone, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, KBEV, I know I might usually forget, but thank you, everybody, the students that are here, we appreciate it. Trying to remember to give a shout-out, and want to wish all the students who celebrate Halloween a wonderful, safe Halloween. Hopefully, most of the smoke will have subsided. I have been choking on this stuff lately outside, but I appreciate that. And I also, yes, happy birthday to you. I also want to wish happy birthday to my twin brother on Sunday, November 3rd. Happy birthday to my twin brother, Josh.
To you.
Oh, right.
Happy birthday.
That's right. That's right. I got a decade over you, sir. Decade over you. Thank you. Board meeting on the 12th, unless otherwise called up by staff. There is the science fair next Tuesday, so some of us may already be here, by the way. Keep that in mind, four to six, so if you want to, before or after.
It's at B V.
Oh, it's at B V, that's right. That's right, they didn't do it here this year. Okay, well, it's down the street, whatever. Well, we can meet over there, who cares? Whenever. Who else, who else is judging the science fair? Is anybody else judging? Judging, judging? Okay.
I'll be there.
We are.
Okay, and I dug, I want to say I dug seeing Thomas playing football last week. I don't get to get to a lot of games this year, but this was my third game that I got to, and I appreciated that. This mensch of a gentleman over there thanked me for coming afterwards, did not have to do that, and I really appreciated that comment. I've told a lot of people about that, so, see, this, this guy raises the bar. Thank you. Okay, meeting is adjourned.